Okay, for why?
Can someone say please?
Would you tell Ronnie where's the ready start?
I'd like to call the planning board to report. We're going to have a complicated schedule because we're going to work this out and I'll go through that in a minute. But the first thing we will do is declare that we are in form and I would ask you all to rise and pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the very motherland of which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, in normal planning board meetings, we have an agenda. The agenda includes determining the forum, pledge allegiance, review of the minutes of the meetings, and old business and new business. And as part of this, we're going to temporarily suspend the planning board meeting itself and hold two public hearings. And it's important that you understand that the two public hearings aren't similar but separate. Because that's the way the state law reads it, so it amounts to. So we'll hold those two public hearings and then we'll go back to the regular planning board meeting. Those of you who are here only for the two public hearings certainly are welcome to say that you're also welcome, right? And we only have one thing on the planning board meeting, so it's not going to be a long event, all right? So, minutes of the meeting from last month were suspended because we were having a public hearing on the shoreline zoning and we had two of you that were here. And so that was our planning board meetings for the minutes, there were no minutes taken. As the law says, we do not have the two minutes of a public hearing. And I'll explain that more to you in a little, in a few minutes. So I want the record today to report and to reflect that we acknowledged that there were no minutes taken on purpose last month. So that historically we know that we didn't just skip them. Now I would like to suspend the planning board meeting temporarily and hold a public hearing on the shoreline zoning ordinance. Now, this is an old business thing because we had it last month and there were only two people here. So we're going to hear it again tonight. And when we have a public hearing, the planning board is here to listen. We have provided you with a copy, and I got copies if you want, of what we proposed to do to amend the shoreline zoning ordinance. You, as citizens, have a perfect right to address any issues that you have, ask questions if you can. If we can answer them, we will be more than happy to. I also was the chair of the committee that wrote it, so I'm probably the one that's going to take the most arrows. But we will allow that. Now, it's interesting that what we've written has to go to town meeting as written. So on the 26th of this month, you can vote again whether you want to have it or not. But we cannot change what we've already written. This is a public hearing to get input from you and to give you information. But it is not an opportunity for us to rewrite the ordinance again. However, the law also allows us to make corrections of typographical errors, other English-type things, not changing the context of what we said, but perhaps the way we said it, in our word choices and stuff. So if you saw any of those mistakes that we may have made, those can be corrected. But the concepts can't. Sir?
Quick question. I got the update today, it says updated 4/13, is that our form?
The one that I have here is August 26th.
I don't have that.
There's plenty of them right here.
I said 4/13.
No, I think 2013, January 20th. This is the one that I just had printed up today, which is considered the final copy. You wrote final on it when you sent it to us, did you? And this is my writing. And I do apologize, when you do these ordinances, we were meeting every other week for two or three hours and every other week we had a new version and new correction was done and it's gone on and on. And if you collected, you kept those, you'd have a house full of them. So there are probably some floating around that were in that stream. That's maybe in square.
My question further is, this one says amended 2022.
22?
Does it say at the very top that shoreline ordinance revised 2024?
The 2020-
Very top.
Yes, the smallest print at the top.
It says revised 2013, 2021.
2013 was the last one to put in effect, right?
There's one more revised, one other thing I would like to add right here.
Okay? Unfortunately, they probably will be able to hold those four around.
This is, this is a colorized one, well, colorized one. Even an old and red stuff came from.
Yeah, I had the colorized one and then we had the black one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, this is colorized one, so it's older.
Yes, it's an older copy, okay. All right, the board will entertain any comments. What I'd ask you to do is go to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone because you are being recorded. And again, you don't have to take minutes of this, but we will have a video record and an audio record of what was said. And this is on the shoreline zoning ordinance, over. Is there anybody that wants to comment? Sir?
My name is Pedro, lovely, Live Day Point, New Lane, and I hear in Hollis Head. My understanding is the zoning ordinance has to do with the ADU program side of that.
The ADU?
Yes, the ADU program called the accessory dwelling unit.
That's the next one. This is shoreline zoning, over.
That one's coming after this.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Human Chaplin, living in Point Road. One of the biggest changes that I've seen in this is that you've taken out a lot of the resource protection and put in recreation. And a lot of the recreation that you, and I'm not saying this kindly, I'm not saying this as an accusation, but you did humorarily change it. Nobody came to you, approached you and said, "I'd like to have my zoning changed to this." You, the committee just decided to change, take out the resource protection and change it to recreation. And my question is, is that a lot of the property that was taken out is done by conservation, owned by conservation groups? And resource protection is all about conservation, not about recreation, it's to conserve the property. So my question is, why did you change something that was very much in line with a conservation property, which is all about conserving it, and so is resource protection? Why would you change it to recreation? And then change the, take away the 75-foot setback in the front and allow them, allow the owners to build an accessory building within 75 feet of short frontage when we just had three storms that wiped out building after building in the first 75 feet? Why would, why would that happen? What's the point of it?
You're not going to be building buildings on a recreational zone.
Oh, it is, it says it very specifically, let me read it to you. "All new principal and accessory structures." "All new principal and accessory structures shall be set back 75 feet from normal high water line of water bodies, tributary streams, or upland edge of wetland, except that in commercial fisheries, maritime, activities district," and this is what you added, "and recreation district, there shall be no minimum setback."
It says there will be no-
It says there will be no minimum setback. That's, he's on page 18. And it's under, I don't have it, I bet this is under B, "all new principal and accessory structures."
Do you have anything more to say?
Um, no, that's, that's my two concerns.
Would you like a response to that?
I would love a response.
First of all, Bill and I were the two that were on that committee that was doing the writing. And there are two other of the six that are here tonight that were on that committee. And they can attest to what I'm about to say or comment on it. And that is that we did go to each of the owners of the properties of resource, the-
Coastal Melbourne Land Trust?
Did you say that a little?
Coastal Melbourne Land Trust?
Thank you, the land trusts. And asked them if that was something that they would look over to, and they said, "Yes, we definitely would like to." And the issue came down to if they were going to preserve this property, instead of having people going helter-skelter through the woods and building their own pathways and stuff like that, they could build nature trails. And the nature trails would likely be within that 75 feet. And that would be considered as a structure, particularly if they put a bridge over a wetland or something like that. They are not and have any interest at all in building a water park and golf course. They have no interest in doing anything that would develop the property. They want to keep it in that resource-protected genre, but they want to have the freedom to have campsites, for example, or fires down close to the rocks, whatever it is that they need as part of their activities. And to each one of them, including Ash Point, Sheep Island, Monroe Island, all said that that's what they wanted to do. Now, when you get to the state-owned properties, which are Lighthouse property and Girth Point, they wrote us a letter and said, "You have no right to put us in resource protection. Get us out of there, because we're going to make the decisions on what we're going to do there, and you're not." And so what we decided was that if we put them in a recreational zone, they would at least have to make a report to the planning board and look for town lessons. And they're willing to do that, but they're not willing to have us dictate to them and say, "You can't do anything with the property that you own, that you want to develop as a natural resource part of the state of Maine, of America, of Owl's Head." In that sense, to be able to utilize that resource for the maximum benefit of the people.
So I'm just going to make some brief comments on that. Just because the conservation groups own the properties now does not mean that they'll own it for 20 years. It is possible for it to go into private hands again, and the zoning will go with that. Number, point number two, campsites are, private campsites are allowed in resource protection anyway. Number three, the state properties, resource protection is a state mandate. It's their own law. They have no right to buck their own system. I mean, that is, that's between the state and the state, that's not. The resource protection says within 250 feet, shoreline zoning is for 250 feet from any tidal pool, any tidal waters. And they're there. The shoe fits, they need to deal with it with them themselves, why are you putting us there?
I think I can answer one of the questions as far as the zoning change in the future. The state has made it nearly impossible to do that. First of all, it's extremely unlike with not impossible to change that zone for a number of reasons. Number one, the financial impact with retroactive of those property taxes that they have waived over the decades would make it financially infuseable to develop that land into residential.
Would that also, would that also go with the conserved properties?
That's my understanding, yes.
So they would have to pay back taxes?
Recapture, dollar for dollar, with penalties. So they pretty much make it not easy to do that.
So it would be very expensive. So, yeah, so anyway, that, yeah, one of my biggest concerns is now putting, when I went to those meetings too, a lot of the ordinance meetings, and one of the concerns that I heard was that in one of the parts of the shoreline zoning, it talks about that you're not allowed to put a straight path going down. But that can be changed, see now, that, you can ask anybody in here, and nobody cares whether or not the path that is put in a conserved property, whether it's straight or crooked. But there's not a single person here cares whether they're, they go according to-
The DEP cares.
Yeah.
The DEP's a good regulation.
The beach to beacon?
No, DEP.
Oh, DEP.
That's DEP regulation, not town regulation.
It has to be, a meandering path cannot be a straight path, you can't see through the path to the water.
That applies to all zones, all shore and inland.
Oh, okay.
Residential or commercial or recreation.
So, okay.
So I think another thing, you're talking about in resource protection, you're not even allowed to cut a path to the shore. So in the case of the islands, you know, somebody comes in on a kayak, they're going to have to only have either one or two access to that whole island. This way here, they can come in and make access to where there's activity wants to take place.
Yeah, I thought that you were allowed to have a path, but you weren't allowed to-
Not resource protection.
Yes, in resource protection, yes, isn't that where it came up, where you couldn't have a straight line? And now that I know that it's DEP, it's probably because they don't want a, in a, in a, in a area that is subject to tides and storms and surges, they probably don't want a green-
It's DEP water, so it's lakes, it's streams, it's-
It's for visibility.
It's a visibility thing, it's not an erosion control thing.
And why do they care about whether it's visible or not visible?
That is their room, I cannot say why.
All right, so anyway, so that still leaves the 75 feet within, is there any reason that you can even imagine that they would need to put a 75-foot structure of any kind in there? Because it is allowed.
The only structures that they have any interest in at all would be something like a bridge going over a wetland to protect the wetlands. Now, they could go fill a wetland block so people could walk over, or they could build a path around it, but they said, and there are times when they would do that. If you go to Newcastle on Route 1 and look at the Great Bay, the Great Sun Bay, there's aluminum ladders that go across those wetlands so that people can use that. And that's all part of their, I don't know if it's resource protection or recreational areas, but it's set aside for that.
Yeah.
Another point that you should realize, and that is the DEP sits over here as the state of Maine and it passes laws and regulations and everything else. And land use over here, which is parks and recreation, doesn't listen to the same people that were talking over here. So you've got the state conflicting with themselves, and they do that, and they do that a lot. And so one of the ways that they do that is they throw it onto the town and say, "You figure it out, do it." And so we accept-
So they're going to sue us if we don't do it?
I have no idea.
They haven't so far, how long have we had that?
Yes, I have no idea whether I'm-
They've never had a lawsuit.
But I hope you come this way.
Well, I doubt very much that you would be there. I appreciate, I appreciate your time and I appreciate that I still disagree with the 75-foot. I think that it's great that right now, the people that you talk to right now, but this is in perpetuity.
Well, can I help you?
So you can't take it away.
You've got to be careful about that too, because we just are in the process of changing this thing that you just said is in perpetuity. And in 20 years, if they say, "Okay, we're going to build a theme park on Monroe Island," we can step in and say, "No."
Well, I know, that's not allowed, that's not what I'm worried about. What I'm worried about are the tool sheds, what I'm worried about are the infrastructures that go into the water, all the things that go wiped out during the storms, that's what I'm worried about. I see no reason to give them specific permission to do that when we've just had such a recent reminder of how very vulnerable our shoreline is.
I'm certain they were well aware of that also.
I'm very sure that that's true, but will they be in 20 years?
I, I don't-
Because what you've given them is not good for five years, it's not, you don't review it in 10 years. It's good, it's there.
But we can review it at any point, next year we can-
But we can't take it away from them, you can't give somebody permission to do something and then say, "Oh, we've changed our mind, we're going to do that." That's, you can make it less restrictive, but to make it more restrictive, that's where you're going to get your lawsuits.
You can make it more restrictive, you can't make it less restrictive than the state law.
I'm not talking about the state law, I'm talking about rights on your property. If you give people rights on their property, you can't just go in there and say, "Oh, you can't do that anymore, we're changing this." Where do you think grandfathering comes from?
Can I say something?
Anyway, that's, that's my two cents worth.
Something that might help you, Lynn, is DEP manages the 75-foot for protected water bodies, which is the ocean here, and it's 100 feet for streams, water, lakes. And they must permit any structure that goes in that 75-foot. If our, we can go over and above them and say, "We don't allow anything."
Right.
And they'd say, they say if it's allowed, and they won't even look at it if it's not allowed in our zone. If it is allowed in our zone, they still look at it and they won't let you put a shed down there. The DEP will not let you put a building unless it's necessary for commercial fishing or- So you're not going to get a tool shed in the 75-foot.
Well, okay.
Unless they will help the DEP. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this, either for or against?
Thank you. Thanks also for the redox, how they're showing. Lauren, Sports Pod 122, Marshall Drive. Couple of questions on map one, so I have the map one on the revision. In map eight, the resource protection areas that were in the original are still there. The ones that were in map five have been removed. And all the other resource protections set for those that were migrated into recreation have remained. So I'm wondering how you determined to just remove the two or three that was in map five, the original?
Are you talking about a specific lot in town?
Well, map five is probably entirely the airport. So the RP areas that were in the original, those are the only ones that have been moved, aside from the ones that have returned to the original. So I'm just wondering how that was determined?
If you read the ordinance prior to this that we're doing now, under, let me remember where it is. I can paraphrase it, we can look it up. But in a commercial zone, in our ordinance as it exists right now, we are not obligated to put in resource protection if it's in a commercial zone. The airport is in a commercial zone, and so we can remove the restrictions of shoreline, of resource protection. We are not filling in the wetlands, we are not saying the wetlands don't exist or anything else, but they will come under a commercial consideration. And in that situation, if they said, "Well, we want to build a building over here and it's going to impact on the wetlands that exist there," they can buy rights to do that. And that's different in a commercial zone than it is in recreation, in resource protection. And it's in our ordinance right now, but it's not well-understood because we've never done anything about mitigating that I know of, perhaps they have. But that mitigation thing applies particularly in the commercial zone and not in resource protection. Okay, so that was the reason.
So the part two, well, to possibly straighten that question. So a lot of those areas that we were just discussing have been, resource protection have been migrated into recreational.
Yes.
Going off the new map.
Yes, and for your information, as you're going to see in a few minutes, the recreational zone was developed and existed in the zoning ordinance, and it exists right now in our ordinance, but it was never defined. And it turned out that in the zoning ordinance, the Lighthouse and the Beach were both in recreation and resource protection. And we said one or the other. So what we've done is incorporate the recreational zone in the shoreline zone, match our zoning ordinance with the whole town, and put it in there and removed the resource protection portion- and put it in there and removed the resource protection portion of it because the places that we put in recreation are already in the business of protecting the resource.
I understand, cool. That opens the door to another problem. So on the land use and zoning chart on page fifteen of the revision.
Page fifteen?
Yep, on the top, the D, all projects that provide for the safety of airport operations. It is yes across the board, no in commercial facilities, planning board approval in recreational. So originally, if I recall correctly, there was no, nothing could really happen in resource protection. So now, because now we have some of these areas that were resource protection, they're now in recreational, and now there can be development or whatever. Not that I assume that the airport's gonna want to put a heliport on Monroe Island, but the door's open to that. And again, I'm not trying to, that's, that's a ridiculous hypothetical. The point is, the door is open to anything that would actually affect any of those areas that are previously protected or protected areas.
In the, in the airport zone, the commercial zone?
So before, if I recall correctly, in the original chart under resource protection, there was no airport can do it, if it actually, this is why we had so much of the problems that we've had the last two years, because they had those resource protected areas in their map, or in their, on their property, right on maps. If their projects were repeating on those areas, they couldn't because it's resource protection. The chart, they were not allowed to repeat on that, those spots. So now that we've turned resource protection recreational, and on our revised, revised chart, it says, as long as the planning board agrees it, that they can do whatever their proposed project is.
If we're dealing with a wetland of some sort, some quality, and there is an impact on it, there's mitigation that has to take place in the commercial zone. So they would have to buy it at five dollars a square foot or something like that. And I'm not sure, please don't quote me on that price, but there is a system like this is done. And if we have anything that comes before the planning board from a commercial point of view, we will absolutely look to see if it's involved and made with wetlands and then mitigate it. If it's gonna happen.
Then my last question. So the way that's, the way that's worded, projects that provide for the safety of airport operations, whose definition of safety applies there? Now, I know that sounds like a crazy, you know, but we have a sliding scale problem depending on what someone's trying to gain or not, from, from a parameter or an ordinance or what have you. They're like, "What does safety mean? Is that according to the FAA? Is that according to their requirements by, by receiving federal funds?" I mean, our airports are perfectly safe for things in here, but they're not safe for, I don't know, a seven-twenty-seven. I'm not saying seven-twenty-sevens are, but my point is that the verbiage of our ordinance is so important because we open these doors, it means that we keep thinking it'll happen. So if we have to extend the runway a mile to accommodate for the safety of a certain aircraft that can't currently land here, that's not our problem. But because we're leaving this window still so wide open, like it just supported and mobilized what other projects the airport wants to present here, the county wants to bring to you saying, "Well, for the safety of operations, we have to do this." That's, that's largely how they've done as much as they have at this point. It's under that guise. So this, this is our, this is our safety now as a town. And the more, you know, gay people that are infused or brought into it and kind of did this together, it's kinda causing problems, kinda looking backwards, actually.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the shoreline zoning ordinance? Roll or con? Seeing, with the board's permission, I will close this public hearing, and we will pass on to the select board a decision. And we don't really even have to make a decision, I'm just gonna say that we had a meeting, and we have X number of people. Please someone get a count of the people. And we had two sets of questions that needed to be seriously answered. And I hope that we did it in a fair and honest way. Okay, now, now I'm gonna call a public hearing on zoning ordinance. And zoning ordinance is the ordinance that we're functioning under right now. And what we discovered was, as we were rewriting shoreline zoning ordinance, that there were a great deal of discrepancies between the two in the definitions. For example, we have a definition of the word in one dictionary, and in the other one it was completely different. So we tried to combine those and get the same definition for each of the ordinances. We also decided that we didn't want to use the word zone in there because you've got the shoreline zoning ordinance, but in each of those two, we wanted to change the term to districts. So we've got resource protection district and recreational district and commercial district rather than zones, because there is a technical difference between the two. So we modified the verbiage a little bit, but did very little to change the zoning ordinance itself, except, and this is the point that you want to make, it was, the state came down and said, "You've got to add this affordable housing issue." It's called twenty oh-three, twenty oh-three, the law. And we were supposed to have it done in June or something like that. They've given us permission to hold it until August. So that forced us to look at the zoning ordinance. We said, "While we're there, let's try and make the two ordinances as close together as we can in contact and concept, and get the definitions right, address this problem of zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, recreational district in the shoreline, in the zoning ordinance, and make sure that it's in the shoreline zoning ordinance, and it's the same place, which we've now done in these." So hopefully, if you read the two together, you'll find that they are much more similar, depending on whether you're close to the water or not close to the water. And that was the intent of it. Now, I'll open it up to the public for anybody who would like to speak. And I am not up to snuff on the affordable housing issue nearly as much as some of the other board members. And they will probably respond to anybody who has questions about that.
Is this the ADU that I talked about?
Yes.
I'll once again add the lovely eight-point, Elaine Howell said me. I went through and read the ADU program, which is a national program. And then, in my personal opinion of the bound, the ADU program is that it's an attempt to house the illegal people ultimately that have been allowed by the federal government into our nation and by our governor into our state. And I have some real concerns when you look at the ADU definition and what it says. It's called accessory dwelling units. It talks about converting our garages, our barns, extra rooms in our house to take in people who are not family members. And that is a real concern to me because my hunch is, once you pass this, the, it becomes a town ordinance. It's gonna allow the governor and federal government to impose upon us taking illegal people into our home for housing. That's the ultimate goal, my hunch is, of what it's really all about. If you read it carefully, it talks about accessory development units, it talks about cohabitating with people we don't know. And it talks about the fact that now that we have in our society the inability to build more homes, which the government itself created. So they created the problem, then they come up with a solution. But they want to solve the problem, which was their desire all along, which is to take away the privacy of private home ownership, which the constitution guarantees. And so I see the ADUs as a very subtle, negative thing in order to take away private property and to impose upon us the illegal people who are in our state, let alone in our nation, into our homes. And that's my hunch is what the real desire of this thing is. It's being guys as the zoning ordinance, but it has a lot more to it than that. It is a very dangerous thing. It's a very bad thing. And I, I hope that Owl's head will defeat this whole thing and not allow it in our town. I don't care what the governor says, because our individual towns have the right to make that decision about who we put into our homes. The very fact that we have housing in an inability and it's not affordable is partly created by the federal government and the corrupt company in Washington DC, as well as our corrupt governor. Then they provide a law to solve it. They create the problem, then they provide a law to solve it. All a part of their plan to begin with. It's not a good plan. It's a very negative thing. If you look up ADUs, any of you, on the website, there's a market watch by Dow Jones. It clearly describes what happened to our town if we allow this. It is a not good thing. And I encourage you as a zoning board to not put this in. My understanding from what you explained to begin with is that zoning districts already involves this ADU concept, is that correct? The changes in the zoning district. Is that what you said, sir?
I just wanna eat a suzer, buddy.
I, I'd like to make a comment on some of your concerns. Thank you for expressing your concerns. I am currently a landlord in Rockland. My wife and I own and manage a hundred and forty apartments in Rockland. Nationally, ADUs have a bad reputation because in certain larger cities, things got out of control because it was not monitored properly. They did not have the checks and balances in place, and it did get a very bad reputation geographically in certain areas of the country, not necessarily Maine. The local municipalities do not have control. That is a myth. We are subjected to follow by state-mandated LD two oh oh three. We don't have a choice, or potentially be found. That was very clear by the ordinances and rules. I just wanted to make a comment in a couple here.
Right, so let me ask you a question. The chairman, I believe, said that it's connected now currently to the zoning district, the zoning district ordinance et cetera.
It, it's in the zoning ordinance, yes. And it's only in two districts, recreational one and recreational two. Road. I'm sorry, road or residential? Let's say, let's say resource.
I think it's in commercial. I think it's in commercial.
There's no, it's not in commercial.
It's just.
That's my way to say that. You're, you're allowed to, if a company had a business, they could have a dwelling of a property.
The state law says you have to allow it anywhere you allow it now. And our current ordinance allows residential in commercial zones.
Oh.
Yeah.
So.
Also, from my dozens and dozens of hours I spend personally helping out the restructuring of local ordinances to meet the state-mandated, I believe the intent of the governor for this program is to allow a family member, an elderly lady, maybe a child that cannot afford to afford housing, which sixty-eight percent of Knoxville County cannot, to make it a little more affordable for a family member to live next to them. That's my opinion.
I believe that is, I believe that that is an existing thing where families take members in automatically, but I do not believe this LD two oh oh three is that purpose. I think it is ultimately for the illegal immigrants who are in our state that our governor has brought in by the thousands. And I believe it also, the program, or the federal government, or throughout our nation, and it's gonna destroy Patrick Crosser. And I'm sorry about that.
I appreciate your opinion.
Thank you very much for your time. I hope you come to the town meeting.
I'll, I'll be there. Then I'll be there.
Yes, Pam.
Can we get you some coffee?
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Pam Holland from twenty-nine, South Florida. I'm just wondering, because I haven't looked at the paper lately. If, there was a rumor that the governor was not gonna require compliance for towns under two thousand households, do we?
I can't answer that. My understanding that it was coming up on the legislative bill to potentially pass, along with six to twelve other changes that may or may not be implemented.
Okay. And then my next question is, like, let's say it's implemented, what is the, I guess, percent? Or do we have a percentage required for our county to implement? Do we, do we have to provide?
It's state-mandated.
Yeah.
There's, there is a rumor, like I said, that towns under two thousand, in fact, you were right, I read that, the same thing that you read.
Okay.
My understanding is still pending, if it goes to four hundred.
I think, maybe a couple short words about the brutality of LD two thousand three, because there's the affordable housing part of it, and then there's the ADU part of it. And we don't fit it, we don't have that roadstone, so affordable housing, we're not mandated to do. So it's the accessory dwelling unit that would apply, that applies to us. And that's the only part of LD two thousand three that we're talking about.
Maria?
Yes.
What's your opinion on that?
Well, no, that's, no, that's, yeah, that's, that's exactly right. But I also wanted to say something else. We have put some restrictions on it, which we're allowed to do. The legislation says it can't be less than a hundred and ninety square feet. And we said it also has to be less than the house that's already there.
You said some structure.
Yes, it's not, well, I don't have a very small house, I'm gonna, you know, build a bigger house, move into it, and I live in the other one. And it all, the other restriction we put on it is that there has to be common ownership. So if you build an accessory dwelling unit, which can be within your house, it can be attached to your house, it could be a separate unit.
Correct.
You have to own both of them. You can't just sell one of them off. So the homeowner has control, and I guess we have to, you know, trust our fellow residents that they're willing to keep the town, you know, the way it ends.
And that is entered into record, and it is perpetual. You cannot sell a separate dwelling.
See, I think to just, for people's information is, all setbacks and side yard requirements apply, as do septic and water. So if you're on a well and a septic system, then you have to provide, you might have to drill another well for an accessory dwelling unit, you might have to put in another septic system for an accessory dwelling unit. So I think, you know, if you have a separate unit in today's dollars to build something like that in our community where I might have to drill another well, I may have to put in another septic system, it, it's gonna become expensive to build, say, a six-hundred-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. You know, you'd really have to think twice about it. Anyway.
That's right. So basically, soil testing caused the construction is gonna dictate all this belt. In my opinion, we're not gonna have a huge encroachment. At the four hundred dollars a square foot, you know.
I think, I think there's one other reality, and that is that the entire coast of Maine is a very expensive place to live. And you are not gonna have affordable housing units in the very expensive places. So the cities may get impacted, Rockland might get impacted, but Owl's Head, Booth Bay Harbor, Camden, places like that, the tax rates are so high that you're not gonna see people saying, "Jukers, let's make my property more expensive so I can pay more taxes on it."
Yep, and I can add something to that. Sorry if I got that back up there again, or no?
Sure. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. That, that way you can capture your voice.
Right. I'll add the lovely eight-point, Elaine Howell said. One of the things that does say in the ADU description is...
What if they, I'm gonna play devil's advocate. What happens if they want to put in a large house, call it their house, and then they're, say they want to put in a seven thousand square foot house, and change their, change that to the primary dwelling, and then their five thousand square foot house can be the ADU?
They cannot do that.
They can't.
Against rules.
And you have smaller than your original.
Legally, cannot happen legally.
Well, they can't change their...
No.
No, very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak with a favor?
Martin Post, five post name. Just as point of clarification, the current ordinance already allows for additional dwelling units, auxiliary dwelling unit, while having nuances falls within that. The planning board has the same responsibilities and the same power to control auxiliary dwelling units as they do regular dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, multiple dwelling units. It's the same setup. It's just a subtype of that that the state has put forward. So there are nuances. The biggest difference, I believe, is the parking requirement.
They do have a risk.
They do have a risk. So auxiliary doesn't require parking.
Accessories.
Accessories, sorry.
Accessories.
Does not, whereas all other dwellings do. To be, to answer some questions about the subject, anytime you add a dwelling unit, you have to add at least two bedrooms worth of capacity, which would, if you have an existing system, push it into a major expansion, unless your current system is massive. If your house already has twelve bedrooms in it, you might not get past that line. If you add a single bedroom to your house, there is proviso that you put in your deed, in registered court of deeds, that your system is designed for, say, four bedrooms, and you've reached up to five, and when you sell that, you have to take a hit on that. It's a permanent attachment to your deed until your study gets updated. But any separate dwelling has to go up to a minimum of two bedrooms or one hundred and eighty gallons per day.
Regardless of square foot.
Yeah, regardless of square foot. And if it has more bedrooms, it's even more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
According to page S point drive, if I understand correctly, the minimum in this instance would be a hundred and ninety square feet. The maximum, as stated by the discussion, was not larger than the existing structure, the existing home. So my question is, if you have a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot home, you can now build an accessory dwelling unit of two thousand square feet?
No, because we set the maximum square footage allowed on that, well, between one ninety, whatever we municipality chooses.
Okay, but that's not part of the ordinance at this time.
Not at this time, I don't believe, no.
No, that is not.
No, Gordon, Gordon is right.
There's currently no legislation. It's based solely on the size of the existing structure. So my question is, and then I have a follow-up to that. My question is, why didn't you put a maximum, say, for example, a hundred and ninety minimum, fifteen hundred square feet maximum? And then the follow-up to that is, other than setbacks, is there any limitation to the acreage and the size of the lot into which this is going to be built? Is that, was that a...
Twenty percent lot coverage.
Twenty percent.
Lot covered, yeah.
Twenty percent total or in addition? In addition.
No, total. Total, I'm counting your garages and other sheds. Everything would be...
Asphalt.
Falls under that twenty percent. In shoreline.
Oh, no.
In the shoreline zone, it'd be any non-vegetated surface. Non-shorelands, twenty percent of your lot.
So again, my question was, is there any discussion or consideration to put a limit other than saying smaller than the existing structure?
It was discussion, but I think the sliding board decided not to.
Yeah, I think we went with the size of the buildings. What I think the concern was that a small cottage on the shore could build a two-thousand-square-foot auxiliary building, and then move into that and have a little cottage for the family for the summertime and the bigger home. And that was something that the board did not feel was in the best interest of the town.
But I think Gordon is asking, if you have a large house, or any size house, why didn't we restrict the second one to some number, as opposed to just say?
We talked about it.
We talked about it, yes. There were reasons.
Again, going back, the regular dwelling that is currently allowed, secondary dwelling or associated dwelling, has no size restriction, just because you're common auxiliary dwelling. People that don't call it an auxiliary dwelling, your new dwelling by, under current ordinance, can be any size as long as you don't violate setbacks and the lot coverage issues. And you have sufficient subject and more.
And lot size.
Lot size, it has to be double.
Which this doesn't have lot size. So if you want two dwelling units right now, you have to have eighty thousand square feet in RR1. RR2, you need a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. ADUs, basically the law says, anywhere you allow one single home, you must allow another. Now, some towns did do what Gordon was kind of suggesting. They said maximum a hundred and ninety-one. So to give them time to figure out how to deal with this. So, you know, who's gonna build a hundred and ninety-one square foot accessory dwelling?
I mean, it's a rare situation certainly in the town of Alseth with the number, the size of the homes that are here now, the property lots. But in some instances, you're not talking about an accessory dwelling. You're talking about a common home. You've got five thousand, five hundred square foot all down the beach, down at the waterfront, plenty of room to add another forty-five hundred square foot more. That's right. So I'm just thinking that if not, this was the only thing that's been come up that's certainly...
I'm trying to remember, and I'm not the expert, if the shoreline zoning and floodplains only, they all fly, right?
State rule supersede.
I believe we can't do this with the shoreline zone.
So answers, yes. But floodplain, not applicable.
Is there anything else that anybody would like to say in this public hearing?
Sir?
Could I respectfully ask the members of the planning board to identify their name and their residential location? If they would, I don't know what they are, so I...
I'm Bob Pratt, the chairman of the board, and I, my address is four Beach Street in Alseth.
Okay, thank you.
Maria Devere, fifteen Woodland.
Dale Martin, one ten Bellevue.
Susan Deutsch, five twenty-four Ashford, alternate.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear where you live.
Five two four Ashford, thank you.
Buddy Carlton, sixty-eight North Shore Drive.
Bill Leppen in one twenty-one Bellevue Street, Alseth.
Thank you.
And that information is available on the website.
I know, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you for doing that.
Is there anything else? And I'd like to close the meeting, the public hearing on the zoning ordinance. These two ordinances will be brought up, and I forget the numbers in the book that is just about the warrant itself, but they're gonna be two separate votes, one for each of the two ordinances. And at that point, you have a perfect right and an obligation to speak your piece to the whole entire town. And at that point, it could be either accepted or denied. Our job was merely to collect the information from you today, and we're very grateful that you came. We didn't have just two people. So other than that, I'd like to...
One final thing before we hit that gal. Currently, I'm told I have to enforce mainstay law, whether we've done anything or not. So the question will be, if this gets denied, I'm still enforcing mainstay law. So that'll be, I don't know what happens if that happens.
I don't know. Find out.
Yeah, that's a legal question.
What happens to you?
Whatever restrictions we put on it, I guess we'll go with.
If it's denied, then the ordinance that we have that exists right now saves.
Right, but state law, I'm still supposed to use, even though it's not in our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you all very much for coming. We're going to now open the public, the public portion of the planning board meeting itself. And to that end, we have one request for an application from the museum, the Alseth Transportation Museum, for an expansion of a very wide building to make an addition of, I think it's forty-five hundred feet. And I'm gonna turn it over to the two gentlemen from the museum to make their presentation.
Did you guys get, I left eight applications and eight drawings up?
Yeah, we've got, and I think we all got one.
I can't see them.
John Butero, executive director of the Alseth Parks and Space Museum.
Good evening, Jacob Reynolds, the director of operations at the Alseth.
So the permit that we've submitted this time, we have identified our expansion plans in prior meetings and so forth. What we're trying to do here is to create STEM education classrooms for the entire state and coast, obviously. But anybody else that we can bring in to help with various STEM education K through eight classes. We have tried, and we've spent a considerable amount of time and resources trying to do this within the footprint of the museum. And the best design forward is to take this with its deed and expand four thousand square feet outside in the north direction of the back corridor. And so that's the permit that you have in front of you today.
Did you have anything to run to say, or?
Pretty much, yeah, 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 that's my idea, yeah.
As you know, the method for our operational system says that we will accept the application, and then we have thirty days to assure and determine that it fits all the rules and regulations. And we're going to exercise that right in these thirty-five days. But it will be the next planning board that we could then have the finding of facts, the conditions of law, and then as a board itself, vote to accept or deny the application. So we're grateful to accept your application down and stop that process going. If during that thirty-day period we find that there are serious omissions in the application, we can notify you of that and maybe have it ready in thirty-five days. But we can also extend the time until the application is totally complete. And the planning board chair and the CEO have reviewed this, and we do have some questions that we need to have answered. And some of it may very well be additions to the application as presented for you, okay? And the first one that we've talked about is that the application, as it states, needs a site plan. And the site plan is supposed to include all the boundaries of the property and all of the others of the property. Now, a little small, two-acre property, that's not easy, not a good altitude, and you've got a hundred and sixty-one acres, I think it is, of it, and you've probably got a fair number of other others. But you also have a commercial airport, which is one of your others. And at some point, we feel that the town should have, as you call it, a D-size area.
Yeah, I mean, a quarter inch, quarter inch, ten foot is what's in our ordinance.
Yeah. A DDA of the whole property. And that will help you in the future as you're applying to this. I certainly do not imply that you have to go get an entire survey, but it's probably already done. The maps that you've given us, sorry, the paperwork that you've given us to look at is so small and complicated that it's difficult, one, to know exactly where this building is going to be and how it fits into the rest of your property.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
I think one of the other times that you guys appear.
Correct.
Rodney has suggested that you do something like this for future use because with your capital projects, you'll be using it over and over again.
Right.
So, you know, because when I looked at this, that was my question. Where is this gonna be relative to all of your other buildings? And the runways and all of that stuff? It's difficult to know that from the drawings that we have.
Now, in the application as it's written, it asks about bathrooms. And you say NA, not applicable for the total number of bathrooms, and then provided us four pages of same supply list. And from what I can gather, you are now asking the planning board to consider modifications to bathrooms that are existing now in an existing building. The planning board, as a board, does not typically go inside a building and make decisions like that. And we certainly are not involved in the plumbing codes and stuff. That's a code enforcement officer issue. If this application is to continue for some reason or other, and I'd love an explanation of the bathrooms, then I would probably ask the board for permission to have a site visit so we could get inside the building and see what it is that you're doing. What I understand from the way you've written it, the four thousand square foot, forty by ten, forty by a hundred, has no bathrooms in it at all. It's an open, relatively open structure. Maybe some temporary walls or something like that. And again, that's not something that the planning board gets involved in. We're interested in the structures from the outside and where they fit, what the setbacks are, and that kind of stuff. And you're now asking us to go back to a building that exists that has bathrooms in it. And I'm not sure what you really want us to do to approve which toilet we're going to buy. And that was confusing.
Sure, sure. Yeah, the intent there was to create, basically, nursing stations, basically, family-type nursing stations.
Mm-hmm.
That's the intent is public company. But we can definitely identify that.
Okay.
And so that's left down here?
Yes.
Okay. So you're gonna put a bathroom into...
Take an existing closet, an area, utility area, and turn that into family nursing stay areas.
In all honesty, that's probably not for the planning board's consideration, but it should have gone directly to the code enforcement officer, who would be responsible, or the LPI, listening plumbing inspector, for any of those modifications. But those are different permits than what we would consider. So some, addressing that issue would be in force to get the final application approved. You also said that you've got, I think it's a hundred and six parking spaces. I think that was the number that used in here. A hundred and six spots. Are those new spots because of this building, the structure, or are they just a hundred and six that you pulled out and said, we'll just add that here? And then the second part of the question, and obviously is, does this new addition of forty by one hundred have to have a hundred and six potential employees or people who are gonna park there? Are you expanding your parking lot for a hundred and six more lots or anything? That's, so you're using the same parking spaces over and over again on each application?
Right.
Does this new building need extra parking?
No. Obviously, for K through eight, they would be must-in most likely or or use of existing visitors. Because they're parked.
Do you need parking for buses?
We have parking spaces for large vehicles.
Okay.
We also use several lots that, beyond the hundred and six spots on that, use lots that are adjacent to the apartment.
Okay. One of the things that the board is gonna have to consider is, if the structure is included, and I think it's 1.7% of the buildings that you've got, should you have an expansion plan for increased parking. I get a little hesitant to think that you've got a beautiful building and you've got a beautiful parking lot, and every time you add something to it, you take the same parking lot and you use it all over again. And so at some point, your buildings may get much larger than the parking you've got available. And as you grow, you probably have to grow in the parking area as well. And I think that the board would be very interested in your plan of that.
You know, I hear the property fairies don't place the parking. I mean, you have those auxiliary parking areas, like, but they're not asphalted. And I suspect that those spaces are not includes a hundred and six. I think that you should consider include those because you do actively use them during your events. And if the events are really packed, you open up a parking lot across the road. My second comment is, my understanding that your, is that your STEM classes are probably gonna be held weekdays, maybe during the summer, during vacation weeks for the kids and stuff like that. So those are typically times where you're, you don't have a lot of people just walking in. So your parking lot at that point is kind of underutilized anyway because your building is, I shouldn't say it's mostly empty during the weekdays, but it's not like event weekends.
Generally, these are, these school sessions aren't, and during the school sessions, obviously, when you're following this...
Yes, you're trying to, what's the word? You're trying to have more usage of your facility during times where today are our normal down times. You're trying to do things during that period. And the STEM classes would be held during weekdays, vacation weeks, maybe the summer weeks, like the day camp kind of thing?
What you break, my break.
Yes.
Right.
So, I mean, my point here is that your parking lot isn't full at that point. But I also, again, the first point is, your auxiliary parking, which you do utilize quite a bit during events, should be in that number that you give us. That hundred and six is really, that's just your asphalted spots.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good evening. Just a couple of things I noted here. I remember in the past meetings you discussed using existing grass areas for parking. Did you, I can't see that. Did you identify that on the recent plan, specifically where those grassy areas are to be used and how many are to be used for parking?
There's not a better one. We can, as we add it to it, if we go bigger with the site plan, we can identify those grass areas on the site plan.
And as you expand, you may wanna consider some type of parking study to determine how many additional parking spaces you may need based on the type of expansion and the number of, whether, I guess, it may be a must-in, that may not be an issue. But I do know that parking, the type there was one of the two of the largest events. And I think it would help us if we could identify the grass areas.
My question is, a STEM family room, usually called a bathroom?
That's that nursing kind of family area. So we were trying to create...
It looks like it's got a toilet and a sink in there.
For convenience and, yeah, just for convenience if someone needs to take care of themselves out there.
I mean, is that an existing bathroom now? So you're gonna add that? And then the nursing area, that looks like it's got a sink in it, so it's gonna not have a toilet, just a sink?
Correct. Just for convenience. And I didn't provide, you weren't thinking of the mess as bathrooms proper or some as kind of nursing stations or even calm-down areas for anyone. To your point of a full site plan, thirty feet down is men's rooms and ladies' rooms, which would be used for kids and adults.
You don't have to consider expanding the septic system to handle that one bathroom, a family room?
We've got, I don't know what we've got. We've got plans and so forth for the capacity of the use for our lives and demand, so.
There's basically, for a commercial building, there's a table for that type of use, this many gallons per day. And so adding bathrooms doesn't really change it. You're adding some floor space, so you, you know, a site evaluator would have to tell you. But it's already designed for those big events. I wouldn't worry about that. The bathroom's pretty simple. All I would be checking is, you know, the venting and dimensional. You know, so your water closet, your urinals, and they've all got the right space, plus then.
Is it the consensus of the board that the application as presented to us right now is totally complete?
I have no problem with that. I mean, you've already got the existing backing. I mean, you just point clarification on where they are, not overlapping, I guess. Other than that, it was not, pretty straightforward.
Other comments? So crosswalk, or flat?
Slab, yeah.
With a full, with a full crosswalk.
I think I would like to see where this building is relative to the other buildings.
No, if I can, if you can just... You want to say, isn't it? You mean within the site?
Yeah, within the site.
The whole site, yeah.
You know, where is it? I know it's gotta be close to the main building because the bathrooms aren't offered for basic classrooms, but, you know, you said, is it to the east?
Yeah, listen, if you have a copy of this? We've got that, yeah, we've got that. And I took me a half an hour trying to figure out, oh, sorry. Okay. Mr. Prudential, working with this every day, I apologize for it. But, you know, basically, what you're doing is you're looking at, the entrance roads are on the lower part. And so also, you go in there, and then the parking is directly ahead of it on the left side.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what we're doing is, we are, this forty-by-one-hundred addition is on the north side, so facing those grass parking areas.
Okay.
That's the shaded in the area on this one here.
Okay.
And this one shows the main building, the workshop building that we put up, the storage building up here to the west.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, but again, it's not relative to the lot, so I'd be happy to come up with a full site plan.
Where does this fit into that?
That is a local, this area right here, where the shade is.
This is the hundred by forty?
Well, there's, yes, what you're looking at there is 100 by 80, where 40 feet or 4,000 square feet is inside the existing building. And then 4,000 square feet is outside the existing building.
That's what we're appealing to.
Correct.
That's all.
That's correct.
Is this a road on this map that goes around it?
That's it, that's an access road, yes, yeah.
What does it, where does it go?
It goes up in the back there, there are fuel deliveries. There's a storage building up there, which is, again, not identified, but just drawn out. So there's access to the storage building, there's fuel deliveries, and the service vehicles.
If you want to have that stuff on a map for people that don't understand, for, you know, certain drawings and figure that out.
Yeah.
Apologies, I've done it for a while, it still took me a few seconds to orientate where your access road is coming in and going out. So if you had, you had that designated or written in, it would probably be, you know, plus confusing to people that don't read it.
Sounds good. Happy to provide that.
So like, to look at this, so this part is the new part and this is existing?
Yes.
Okay.
This is in the, it's basically, we're going to add 4,000 square feet to the northern area of the state of Maine, the existing state of Maine gallery. We're going to use 4,000 feet within the existing gallery, which you're seeing on your paper there.
Yeah.
And then the additional structure.
That's the new part, this part.
Additional 4,000 square feet.
So this is, what is it, 100 by?
40.
40.
40, and then this is actually 100 or 40.
Yeah.
A little bit more than that, and that's why it's close to the bathrooms.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that hallway is where the bathrooms are.
Yeah.
And it has its own entrance for school, buses, pickup.
Right.
So it has its own entrance where children won't be involved in visitor parking, visitor...
Right, because that's, that's down here somewhere.
Correct.
Okay, I get it.
Let me get back to the question I asked originally. Is the Board satisfied that this is complete enough to go forward? Or do you want to wait until the questions that we've asked have been answered? I'm happy.
Can I ask me one question, sorry? Usually, isn't there someplace in our permitting application where we ask for dollars?
I believe that. Or, is this in there?
It's in there.
Okay.
Right on the very first page.
Oh, okay. Don't, sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the right. You guys are going to go left, right, and use to that. You're okay?
I'm good now, yeah, thank you.
Can I just make one comment? Susan. Just as a point of clarification, Susan is an alternate, so she's not going to be voting on this because we have a formal. Sure.
My comment is, it's your decision, but our ordinance says you're going to have a full site plan for a certain scale, and they don't have it. And, you know, had I not asked three months ago to do this next time, I, I would, if these guys gave me a site plan for a shed, I would make them meet the requirements of the ordinance. Up to you. And you can also say, get us one next week and we can all look at it before, you know, you don't have to say it. The clock starts over. But I think the odd again.
Happy with that, okay. Then, good point. It would be the opinion of the Board that we will not approve the application, start the clock tonight, but once that site plan arrives, if you give us a few days to circulate it around, and I'm not legally allowed to take it from person to person and get a vote and come back, it has, we probably will have to come to a special meeting. And that would mean we'd have to have 14 days' notice for the meeting and everything else to approve that and then start the clock.
Rodney, can you specify again for Jacob and John?
It's right in the application. It's the simplest site plan requirements I've ever seen. It just gives you all property lines, all setbacks for all your existing buildings and your posts. Then you can look at the whole thing, you know, it probably should be a D-size or E-size, depending on how big you want it to be. Even if it was small and electronic, you could zoom in and volume.
It'll be handy for you and hopefully you'll have more future plans.
Yeah.
So if you had that master plan, then you can just plop it on. You don't have to plan and bring it back. We will wait, respond, you can do that through the code enforcement officer, or you can contact me and I will give you the options.
We'll drop it off.
Yeah, once, once I take possession of it, it's going to be distributed, but it has to be distributed in public. Where I can't go over to Billy's house and sit down and say, hey, look, who's home? Not planned that way.
We'll drop that, as would the application for this, drop on that, please, that's what I'm saying.
Is there anything else before the Board relative to this application? The meeting is almost done now. We have one more activity and that is, we have to review the minutes of the last meeting that we've written down and prove or non-prove those. And for those of you who are leaving, thank you so very much for coming, we appreciate it. You got the minutes?
We should all have them, they were in our folders.
Yes.
And they were for the June 10th meeting. And if you recall, that was the meeting, we didn't have a live stream. It was, I recorded the meeting on my phone. Which I did, just so you know, I did send the recording because our town board was horrified and I didn't use the computer. So I sent her my audio file for them to, you know, file perpetuity somewhere, wherever. So we also had, we had public hearing. Was that the public hearing for the town managers? I remember.
We did your work for a town manager.
Yeah, you did.
We did as a planner?
No, 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 not us, it was a public hearing.
Oh, yes, that, that could have happened, but it didn't come before the planning.
No. Okay, no, it was, so anyway, no, it was, it was something that we did. And I can go back to my audio recording because I, I recorded about the first five minutes of that. So anyway, these are the minutes from that meeting. I did send it out as well.
I have two copies.
Yeah. I think I sent you guys the audio file to, Brad, didn't I send you guys the audio file?
You usually put it, you code it in for us, we don't...
We didn't have a YouTube livestream.
Oh, okay.
That was because they took the computer, we were coughing, going downstairs.
Yes, that's when they were...
And I was horrified and like, what are we going to do now? So I recorded it on my iPhone, the recording app, the audio recording app. And I'm pretty sure I sent that audio file to everybody so that you guys would know. But I also did send it to the town office, the staff there to do whatever it is they wanted to do with us. But this is the minutes from that meeting.
Okay, is there any corrections to the minutes of the meeting on June 10th? involves seeing them red, everybody, then I'll entertain a motion. Anybody who wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I was not.
How many motions do we have? So a motion has been made and seconded that we accept the minutes of, on the June 10th.
Phil seconded.
Yes, as written. All in favor? And Susan, you can go up.
Should we, we're a voting member then.
Voting is unanimous. Is there anything else to come before the Planning Board? You're sitting here politely, did you have something for us?
No, just, I'm here, want to go.
If there's nothing, if there's nothing else tonight, then we're... Thank you all for coming.
Maybe you turned it one out. This is the latest.
That's the one.
Hey, hey, do you know Dale? Dale Martin, this is Dave. Dale comes from Bellevue. This is the person who has the last, she wants a press. It's the white branch, the shutters, your neighbors. They're spitting distance of each other.
I mean, I read it online.
So are you going to build a menu? Oh, that's good. Because this is a Charlotte, right? This be, of your, because it's... Speaker of, I'm right here.
You don't see any definitions. Yeah, it should probably be CEO slash boss.
No, I, you do practice that as a writer.
Yes, that could be.
I didn't know. But you know, would you restrict it in the signs? Kind of be, we decided, I suppose, I know.
I think we should. Thank you for bringing that to my table. This morning, there's a point to this.
Okay, let's go do it.
Try, try and go to the back table, see if there are...